I will follow the order. Again, welcome everybody to the Norton Planning Board's meeting Tuesday, August 30th. This was billed as a hybrid meeting, but as we're having technology issues, this is an in-person meeting at Norton Public Library, 68 East Main Street. We'll also be able to be viewed on Norton Cable Access, Channel 15, and on the Norton Media Center YouTube page in the near future. For the hybrid meetings, if you have questions ahead of the meeting, you can send those to the Board through Brian Carmichael seated to my right, whose email address is listed on all of our agendas. And again, just for posterity here, pursuant to the Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting was posted to be conducted in person, and as a courtesy, the remote lines reports with applicable law. Please note that an option for more attendance and participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public in board members. The meeting you're hearing will not be suspended or terminated for technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless required by law, which is once again the case this evening. Just in terms of general business, I did send a message to the town IT coordinator after our previous issue, and she said we should be fine to go ahead. And obviously, that was not the case. So there will be further discussions on that front coming up in my near future. So with that out of the way, I don't think, Brian, do you have any kind of business and policies? Or just go straight into bills and warrants?
We don't have any policies.
Okay, well, bills and warrants. We have one here from...
I've got the four reimbursements.
These are the four reimbursements that they approved in our previous meeting. And Verizon bill, and that's payrolls, and that's just me. So if you'd like to take a look at the reimbursements that we approved in our last session for old accounts, as well as the ever-important monthly cellphone bill that we need to approve. We haven't figured out a better way to get that through purchasing. So please take a look. If we have any questions, please raise them, and we'll go from there. These were just like we assigned, correct? Or are you... okay, so we don't need to actually do that right now. So we're not approving any additional minutes, correct? So with that out of the way, the first other item on our agenda is an endorsement of an A&R for 394 Old Colony Road. The applicant owner is Ron Haskell. Mr. Haskell, are you here? No? Sorry? I didn't see you back there.
My name is Tyler LaFretiere. I'm here with Russell Engineering, representing owner Ron Haskell. So the point of this plan is basically to combine all of the existing lots into one, and also eliminate Decal Drive, which is a paper street. The bigger reasoning behind it is for an upcoming project that he'd like to do that basically would not be possible with the current lotlines.
And this is because, is that because of its multi-zoned?
No, because of setbacks off of lotlines.
Setbacks off of lotlines?
Yes.
So I see that part of this is zoned industrial, and part of it is zoned commercial. So what are you looking at happen with that delineation with the new lot?
That does not need to change. That will not affect the project plan.
So the line between the two zones would stay as-is, and the lot would be split? So we do have, I have the giant milars down here. If anybody would like to look at them, otherwise, if we have them all to the screen. Should I pass them down? If nobody wants me to pass them down, then I will refrain from doing so. Do we have any additional questions for the engineer here?
Mr. Chair? So this is looking like an existing subdivision. Can I ask when that subdivision was done?
I do not know an exact date, but it was, I would say, 30 to 40 years ago off the top of my head.
Would have been after 1955? And you are removing Decal Drive?
Correct.
So the street hasn't been built. Mr. Chair, can we refer to in the A&R handbook, page 31 and 32?
I can certainly pull it up. Is there a specific?
So the street, the guidance that I'm seeing from the A&R handbook states that it's approving A&R lots on subdivision ways. And it states that if an approved way was not built, and there is no performance guarantee in place, it does not appear that the applicant is entitled to an A&R endorsement, that they would need to go with special permit.
To remove the paper street?
I believe so, yes. Was Decal Drive approved by the town?
I believe it was, yes.
I'm interpreting this is, it doesn't allow for an A&R endorsement.
Okay. Just to confirm here, which, is it the A&R handbook?
Yeah. It would be under Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Subsection U and W.
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
Sure. Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Subsection 81, U and W.
Subsection U, since that's before W.
Yeah. There seems to be some, at least a couple of instances of precedent of this within the A&R handbook. And I may just not be interpreting it correctly, but...
Hold on a second. U and W. So we are modifying...
An existing subdivision. And it says if there is any change to the number, shape, size of the lots shown on a previously approved subdivision plan.
We're also assuming that that was an actual subdivision when it was done.
Well, that's why they had asked. So if it was done after 1955, then it would have been an approved, under the subdivision control law?
Brian, is that something that came into your discussions during this project at all? Or in terms of whether this would be a subdivision which we'd need to be undone through...
We had a discussion with the building commissioner and the conservation commissioner, who had suggested going to the A&R first before going with their next step. So...
And Laurie, your reading of the subdivision of the mastermind, was it they were not entitled to an A&R?
Yeah.
Not necessarily that we could not grant one?
Court has decided, so, court has decided that a plan is not entitled to an A&R endorsement unless the previously approved subdivision way that is shown on the A&R plan has been built, or there is a performance guarantee assuring that the way will be built.
That's fairly definitive.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Despite the fact of what we have in front of us? Let me see here. So just to confirm, we received the application on the 23rd, correct?
Yes.
Would you have any objections if we continued this to our next session and got opinion of kind of council for our next session?
Uh, no, because that's fine.
Laurie, you think that's it?
That's fair. I actually, if we're doing that, I do have a couple of other questions that the gentleman may not be able to answer, and he may want to come back with, if you don't mind, if we get them all out now. I also note, and actually, Mr. Chair, this may just be a question for you. I note there is an open special permit currently on 394 Old Colony, which is the...
The deck building?
Correct.
For Lucky Green Ladies?
And I don't know how that is addressed. There's quite a bit of documentation in that file.
And that is one of the lots that's being combined?
It is.
Yes.
I'm also questioning lot 260-15, which is 394 Old Colony, on which the buildings reside, has a different owner than the other six lots. And I don't know how that is addressed. Would we need to see a letter of intent of some kind?
Do the applicant, I see a couple of different, an entity listed and an owner listed. Do those entities own or have interest in all of the lots?
The owner, Ron Haskell, is the only member of Norton Plant Agency.
So it technically, then, is the same owner of all seven?
So that answers that question? Yes. It is, let's see, the... The contents of the existing special permit that's in process wouldn't necessarily change. It's just the delineation of the lot, and the size of the lot, the description of the lot.
Yeah, because there was parking that seems to have been assigned to them that may be coming from other areas. I don't know how that...
I don't think it was coming from other areas. It was just kind of all over the place around the building.
Okay. I didn't know if it was coming from one of these other...
No, it was all contained on that lot. It was tight. But they had, they met all of it, and they had worked with the other tenants in those buildings, and that was all discussed during the special permit process. As bookkeeping would be one thing. But I don't see that impacting the special permit other than making it really challenging if the registrar may have to, whatever, they have to pull the file. But yeah.
So it doesn't preclude that special permit from moving forward?
I would say so. The corollary that I would see is if somebody, if the town decided to rename a road while the process was in, permit was in play, then that's the similar kind of... Does the description change to the lot if it's not?
Right. Well, if we're getting rid of Decal Road, then the only, I'm assuming this entire lot would then become 394 Old Colony?
Yes.
Yeah. So the size of the lot, maybe the map number or book number or something would change. But that would be something for...
But it doesn't prevent that person from moving forward with their project?
I wouldn't think, no, I wouldn't think that would make a difference. But I do think it's probably worth clarifying your earlier question with town council. Would you have, would you be okay distilling that down to provide the forward along?
Oh, sure.
Since you already have the references all set?
I got it, no problem.
And Brian, if we did send that to Amy?
Sure.
Yeah. I mean, as long as we have a definitive answer for the next meeting. We don't act on this quickly, because we don't want it to turn into a prescriptive approval. So our next meeting would be, it's the 20th. Does anybody have any objections to that course of action? Or other questions for the applicant?
Motion to continue A&R 16192 to September 20th. Seconded.
Okay. Thank you for the motion and the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Continue to September the 20th. And if we get response back from town council, Brian can share that with you ahead of time. We'll know what's going on. If we need to proceed with this as-is, or if we need to pursue this in a way.
Sure.
Despite what was discussed in the other session.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is SP 12737 to 80 South Washington Street. This applicant is again requesting continuance to October the 25th. Brian, this is getting into too many continuances territory. Has there been any discussion with the applicant specifically?
As to when?
As to when they will actually present, or whether there's going to be a resolution with other negotiations that they're working on related to this property, the adjacent property?
They say that, or they think it will be concluded by the next movement.
Okay. So they think that the 25th of October will actually happen?
At this time.
I think it might be, might be fair if we get close to that meeting and they're asking for another continuance, that we need to, that we can discuss how we want to proceed, and whether it makes sense to ask them to withdraw.
And see if they're ready?
Exactly. I know this is a complicated commercial situation, so I'm not going to try and push them. But it's not fair for anybody who's in a butter or something like that to continue to wonder if this is going to actually be discussed at these meetings. Okay. Does anybody have any other objections to continuing this one more time?
A motion to continue SP 12737 to October 25th.
Seconded.
Okay. Thank you for the motion and the second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. 80 South Washington Street is continued to October the 25th. One more continuance on the agenda this evening. This is for definitive plan 13932 and special permit 14704 for 0126, 128, and 154 Pine Street and 0 Wood Road. They had been going back and forth for peer review, but they have preferred continuance to September 20th, correct?
Correct.
Did they expect that they would have reviews completed by then? That's what they said, of course. Anything specific that we wanted to discuss related to this prior to taking action on their request for continuance?
A motion to continue DEF 13932 and special permit 14704 to September 20th.
Seconded.
Okay. Thank you for the motion and the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to continue? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor of continuing, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much, everyone. Next on our agenda, we have site plan review 15808 for 0 Hill Street. The applicant Kessler Machine and Manufacturing. So I'll ask the applicant to come forward here. I apologize that last session you weren't able to join us remotely, so I appreciate you being here.
That's quite all right.
So I know we do have, so I know we do have some members of the public here who'd like to speak on the project as well. So just in terms of order of operations, I'll ask you to give it over your overview of the project, ask if the board has any specific questions, and then I'll ask if any members of the public would like to come up and ask questions of the board. And I can ask them to myself, and if the questions that I can answer, I'll answer them. The questions that you can answer, I'll ask if you'd like to come up and answer them directly.
Okay.
Okay. So without further ado, if you could introduce yourself.
Absolutely. My name is Michael Dryden. I'm a senior project manager with Allen Engineering, here this evening on behalf of Joe Kessler of Kessler Machine and Fabricating, the applicant for the project. Allow me to apologize for my attire this evening. I've been on construction sites all day, so my normal shirt and tie is not with me. So what I'd like to do, just before I get into existing proposed conditions, just sort of a revision explanation, if you will. We initially filed plans dated July 11th, very similar to the plans that I'm going to show you tonight. We were given a heads-up by the Conservation Commission that there was a portion of the stormwater management that needed to be moved outside of a buffer zone to a vernal pool. So we took the exact same program and made a very slight modification to it. I did send those plans to Brian. So those are the plans I'm going to present this evening. If there's a need for me to go back and compare the previous plan, I'm happy to do that as well. But again, it's the same exact program, just moved a little bit, so.
Brian, do we have that, those set of files? I believe the ones that we have in the termite is early, or from July.
Yeah, they're supposed to be July, July 11th, and then July 28th.
Okay. I believe the ones that we have are the 11th.
Yeah, I can go back and check.
That's okay. Again, well, we will see the adjustment.
Yeah, it's very mild.
If you could point it out on what to get to that point, and we have the other version up here.
Happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. So existing conditions, the map is here before you, at a scale of 1 to 30 feet. And you'll see that north is in this direction. The bold black line outlines the site. And just another point of clarification, this is 0 Hill Street. It's known as Lot 3B. This is part of a larger lot that extends to the north. This lot was created via an A&R that was endorsed by the Planning Board not too long ago. But of course, that is not yet reflected in the assessors' data. So we refer to the larger lot. Just know that this is a 3.7-acre portion of that lot, based on the current assessors' information. So again, it's 3.7 acres. It's located entirely within the industrial district. Just to give you a little bit of context, to the east is the Commerce Park, and I believe it's the closest use is the Ryder Rental Company. To the north of the project site is vacant wooded land. A little bit farther to the north on Hill Street, of course, is the solar field, I'm sure we're all familiar with. To the south of the project site, there's only a small area that sort of abuts the southern use, of course, of the wastewater treatment plant. And then on the opposite side of Hill Street, on the west side of Hill Street, is residentially zoned property. There are some residential dwellings along Hill Street. The nearest homes are sort of at the end of the project site. There's vacant wooded land directly across from the project that we're proposing this evening. There are wetland resource areas on the site. Obviously, the project is before the Conservation Commission. There's isolated land subject to flooding. There's isolated vegetated wetland, bordering vegetated wetland. And as I mentioned previously, there's vernal pools on the site as well. We were, as you'll see, able to sort of nestle the project in between all of those environmental constraints. And the stormwater system, I can talk more about that, but that is also being peer reviewed through the Conservation Commission. This is the layout and materials plan. It's a very straightforward project. Its overall disturbance is about one acre. So a little more than one quarter of the site is being developed. The rest will remain wooded as it is today. The development program is just under 10,000 square feet. And of course, as you can imagine, that is to avoid the special permit process. My client doesn't need a building of 10,000 square feet or greater so, or just under 10,000 square feet. It's proposed in phases. The initial phase, Phase 1, is 7,400 square feet. And the second phase is 2,500 square feet. There is a good chance that Phase 2 will never be built, but my client wants to make sure that that is captured and covered in the permitting documents, so that he does have the ability eventually to build up to 9900 square feet.
You are not the first applicant to build a building at 9,000 square feet.
That's why you have thresholds, right? So access to the property, as you can see, is via two curb cuts, here and here. And there are 13 parking spaces proposed and required for this particular use. Circulation around the entire building, what we're proposing to do is 11 spaces along the front that are associated with Phase 1, and then Phase 2 footprint, and two additional parking spaces in the rear would just be long in seed until if and when Phase 2 is built. Utilities, water is readily available to the site. Power is readily available. And ironically, although the treatment plant is just to the south, there is no municipal sewer to connect to, so we are proposing an onsite sewage disposal plan. I'm going to jump to the utility plan here, to show you that location. It's located here, very small system. This uses a very low intensity use in terms of sewer generation. We have done a comprehensive soil testing program, not only for DEP stormwater management requirements, but also for the sewage disposal system. We've gotten favorable results. Soil conditions are sands and grattles on the site, so very conducive to onsite sewage disposal. What we're trying to do is obviously minimize the amount of impact on this site. As I mentioned previously, we're just under an acre, and we talked about thresholds earlier. That one acre threshold is also significant for other reasons. Keeping this project under one acre of impact avoids the stormwater management bylaw, and it also avoids the NPDES process and Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. So there was a conscious effort by my client to keep this project as compact and the impacts as minimal as possible. So what we're doing, you can see the tree line, hopefully, from your vantage point. It's in close to the, we're also in between the two curb cuts. We're maintaining a significant wooded buffer there. If you're familiar with the site, it is quite thickly vegetated in most areas. So we're trying to screen that, the building itself, with maintaining that vegetated buffer. I mentioned stormwater management. The project is designed in accordance with applicable standards of Mass DEP. And to go back to my opening statement of the changes that were made, I'd like to just give you that comparison. So what I'm going to do is flip to the original plan. And you'll note here, there's an open detention basin proposed, as well as a subsurface detention and infiltration system. Upon submittal of this plan, we received an early notification from the commission, which we very much appreciated, actually, because it allowed us to go back and make some changes and sort of avoid, for lack of a better way to say it, wasting everybody's time. This basin was within 100 feet of a certified vernal pool, which is not allowed under stormwater management standard 3. So that was an oversight on our part. We quickly went back to the drawing board, and again, open basin, subsurface basin. The current plan essentially has two subsurface basins. We're able to shift the program... We're able to shift the program over slightly, take that open basin, put it underground. We actually reduced the program a little bit. A little bit of impervious area was removed from the project as well. That allowed us to keep all of the stormwater BMPs a minimum of 100 feet from the certified vernal pool and still, of course, meet the standards for peak flow mitigation, et cetera. So that really is the only change. The building footprint, the circulation, the curb cuts, the number of parking spaces, all stays the same. That's a brief overview, but happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Members of the board have questions? I know I have a few, but I'm going to defer a little bit to make sure I don't hug the microphone, else it's all going through the water.
I'll start. Is this going before Fire Department?
So you have the online permitting process. I've been tracking the comments there. I don't think the Fire Department has weighed in as of yet, unless that happened very recently.
You probably have to walk into them.
So noted. We did put turning templates on the site to make sure your technical peers follow.
It just looked tight coming around one side, and obviously, we always want their approval before we approve anything. Stormwater, I'm going through the bylaw.
Brian, if you could make a note, we can find if the fire checks their box and permize here, or if they want to tell you that it's good to go, if they have it.
I'm happy to reach out to them as well, as the members suggested.
Yeah.
Okay. Somebody will get that.
Just going through the site plan bylaw. Stormwater, obviously, you said it's clear. Concombs covering that. O and M plan kind of has some of it included in this?
Yes, we did include an O and M plan with the stormwater management calculations, and that has been reviewed by the peer review consultant. He does have some.
Is that in what we have?
Yes, I did provide the stormwater.
Yeah, so that's all.
Calc to you as well.
No landscaping plan though, really. I know you're keeping everything in the front, but there's no, you have a tree planting, you have a couple.
Yeah, we did include the details in the event the applicant was inclined to plant additional trees, but our focus here was to minimize clearing and maintain that buffer in the front.
Obviously, buffering is going to be the huge thing we're going to be talking about.
And that's right in the bylaw.
Yeah, exactly. I didn't see any, like, specific notes saying limited to tree cutting or dimensions, or I see the bubble, obviously.
I could certainly add dimensions and notes.
Yeah, exactly, maybe. And then I don't know if you have any room on the entrance and exit ways on either side? It was just that going to be, you know, not cleared right? What we can do there for buffering? So I don't know if you would want a separate landscaping plan. The bylaw has proposed landscaping plan.
I do understand that through the chair. In this case, again, we were maintaining existing vegetation, so it would seem pointless to have another sheet of paper that really shows the same exact.
Correct, but all I see is a bubble all around it. I don't see any notes saying, you know.
So noted. I think I'll just enhance that. If it gives the board comfort, I'll show silt fence around the area to be protected. That will keep construction equipment away from that buffer, so the trees don't get damaged that are, you know, slated for preservation.
And I see a sign, where we have a little sign on the, one of the sides. Do we have descriptions or any cut sheet on the sign or anything that's going?
Oh, there are no proposed signs.
No, I thought I saw, I think that said sign.
Not that I'm aware of.
It's on the plan. I guess it's not.
Do you mean a road sign or a building sign?
On Hill Street, there's just a.
There is a note.
There's a note that says sign. That's just all.
Oh, that's just an exist, that's an existing. There's no proposed signs. You may just be seeing an existing.
Yeah, that's probably what I'm seeing.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah.
There's a traffic control sign there.
Not a new sign.
So just on the building, nothing on the road? I guess my only other thing, without digging into the planned site lighting, is going to be all off the building, basically?
It's all wall packs. We did provide the specs on the layout materials plan, which is sheet four of six of the plan set. They're LED wall packs at a 14-foot mounting height, full cutoff. So we're not talking about, you know, parking lot that lamps at 30 feet. The applicant is very sensitive to the fact that there's residential nearby, so we're trying to keep the lighting levels just to minimal safety. All lighting is mounted on the building. No separate light poles.
Think I'm good for now?
Again, people.
So I understand that you're shifting the building over apparently to the south, pretty much because of the 100-foot buffer zone for the vernal pool on the north side of this proposed project. But there's also, in the original plans, which is all that we have here, is on the south side, the pavement is budding right up to the 100-foot buffer zone of the vernal pools further to the south.
Correct.
So, you know, what amount of pavement and roadway is going to be left to be able to get to all of the bay doors around the building? Of course, there's one in the back. There's one on the north side. And how much, what size vehicles are coming to?
So the largest vehicle that will deliver material to this facility, that's why this is designed with two curb cuts like this. It will pull into the front, stage right in the front. It's all that grade loading. They use forklifts to bring material in, so there's no formal loading in the back. If they have to bring smaller product in and out via pickup trucks, things of that nature, they will do that. But there's a full 24 feet of pavement clear from the back of the building.
Right, but when you move the building towards the south, the pavement is already budding up to the 100-foot buffer zone on the south side of the building.
You're talking about the top right corner on the map, basically, driveway? What's the narrowest point?
Yeah, I mean, because if everything on the left side of the map has to shift to the right, is there even the ability to get around the back of the building without going into the 100-foot buffer zone for the vernal pool on the right side?
Let me make a clarification. The reason we had to shift is because you can't have stormwater vest management practices within 100 feet. We can do work within 100 feet. So we're able to do some work within the 100-foot zone. You'll note that there's no stormwater management BMPs here. That was the purpose of the shift. There's nothing that precludes us from actually doing work within that 100-foot zone. In fact, there's a couple of small areas where we're still within 100 feet over here. It's just, again, the stormwater management cannot be located within 100 feet of the certified.
Okay, and that's a lot for conservation anyway, in the other parts.
You can't put water things near things that are feeding into water.
I'm sorry?
You can't put stormwater management near things that are feeding into a water feature, basically. Is that essentially?
That's one way to say it. It's just written where you cannot have a stormwater BMP, including a discharge point from a subsurface detention infiltration system within 100. That was something I hadn't encountered in all my years in this business, so, which is why it was missed.
Maybe keep your own your toe. Bill, do you have anything further?
I'm good.
I was going to ask a question that may be outside of the engineer realm for you here, but looking at, obviously, the applicant's currently located in Cannes. And we have, you're right next to Commerce Way, and there's other industrial buildings kind of already in place or built. Why here?
This property, in terms of its location, the size of the property, its proximity to 495 was ideal. But I can't tell you much more than that. I do know that my client looked at several properties and chose this one. It's industrially zoned. It's a bylaw use. No special permits. We do have some environmental constraints to deal with, but as I mentioned, we've been able to work with the Conservation Commission and comply with all their local requirements, as well as MASDEP requirements.
I touched on it a couple of times, given the kind of proximity to residential. It's industrial zone, but it abuts residential zone.
Correct.
Has the applicant given you any indication or, maybe this is a matter to discuss, in terms of hours of operation for the facility when it's operational? And kind of on a secondary note, whether would the project move forward? Would be open to specific hours of construction?
I think the latter would certainly be a reasonable request. In terms of the hours, I can't quite answer that. I can tell you that it's not, you know, a three-shift operation or even a two-shift operation. It's typically normal business hours, but I will report back to the planning board with the hours of operation. I was hoping that my client could actually be here tonight, but he was unable to be here, so.
And you mentioned there are 13 spots planned and 13s required. The 13 spots required is for the full 99.
Correct.
9900.
So under Phase 1, there'll be a few extra parking spaces. It just doesn't make sense later to come back and
Oh, yeah, no.
and disturb the area to add them. So we'll reserve two of them along with Phase 2.
Or the boss will take those spots away from everybody else.
Potentially.
Okay. Do we have any additional questions for the applicant at this time? Okay. If you don't mind taking a step back, I'll ask members of the public if they'd like to ask questions of the board or about the project specifically.
Should I? I'm sorry?
And just seed the podium a little bit. I'm not going to. And I'll ask whoever they'd like to come first to please go ahead and speak.
So let's maybe sort of hang in here and answer questions as.
So just in terms of kind of order of operations here, please say whatever you'd like to say. Please direct any questions to myself and the board.
Sure.
And again, one incident we can, if we want to pick this up, the applicant can answer. We'll ask them if they'd like to answer. But we don't want to get into a cross-examination kind of situation, so. Please just go ahead and say your name and address the record, please, sir.
Sure. My name is James Carter. I live in Northwood. And I own Zero Hill Street Residential across from Zero Hill Street Industrial. 6.2 acres, including a pond. One houses surrounded by my property. It's the red house, 61 Hill Street. I do plan on putting other residential homes in the area. So I'm very concerned with traffic. I'm very concerned with the lighting that he is proposing on the building. And I'm very concerned with the noise. It might be disturbing to the residents. Trucks come in and go and so forth. So I took it upon myself to do a little survey with the other residents of Hill Street. Okay, and from the survey, we found that everybody was concerned with the narrowness of the road. They have families. They have children. And they engage in outdoor activities such as walking, biking, running, and other sports. Children are seen playing outside daily at these other residences. Now, the limitations on the road being that it's so narrow, no sidewalks, no lighting to really speak of, no drainage, they are of great, grave concern to my fellow about his friends. So this industrial park, Norton Industrial Park, I feel is what should be really utilized to the full extent to improve the tax base of Norton, okay, through the use of the entrance from South Washington to the park, which would be what's said Commerce Way. If they could make an agreement with Ryder Truck, which I understand owns that right to that road, and extend that road into their Zero Hill Street Industrial Park and utilize the underground utilities that were already there, they won't have to move the telephone poles or anything else on Hill Street to accommodate their use of utilities. So therefore, in that respect, it would be more appropriate to enter from South Washington and egress from South Washington, from Commerce Way. Therefore, you know, limiting all the confusion of what's going to happen. Nighttime comes, naturally, you want to illuminate this 10,000-foot building. You want it to be safe. And this is going to shine all up and down across the street into the windows of the neighbors. There's no getting around it. It's going to happen. So it's not conducive for industrial and residential, as far as I'm concerned. So I got, I took it upon myself to get some petitions and walked around to all the neighbors, and I've got five petitions fully signed by all the neighbors. They agree that these things have to be addressed for the safety of their children and the families. We want, we moved to Norton, we moved to this area, to have a nice neighborhood. And it's very important. They're signed by residents of Crane Street and Hill Street. If you'd like to see them, I can display them. Well, I've already given them to the town manager. He has a complete copy of everything. So that's about it. Okay, I am concerned with this, what is the distance there on the two openings? And the buffer zone, which used to be 200 feet when I bought the property, there was a 200-foot buffer zone. There would never be disturb, 200 foot of trees. And then it's since been reduced to 30 feet. I think if I'm reading this right, which is ridiculous, okay? It's not as thick as he says it is. You can see right through 30 feet of trees right now into that property. And the light is going to shine right through there, and the noise is going to come through there. Is there any noise of botment, of baitment that is planned? When they come running with their trucks, their, what do you call them? The forklifts. Forklifts taking the steel off the back of a semi truck unit, because the lengths of steel that this guy gets is minimum 30-foot lengths. I've seen them. They're six by six, lengths of steel. Cuts them up, fabricates different projects, and now he's got large projects that he has to load on trucks and move them to a, you know, to a customer. So it's going to be coming and going. It's not appropriate. Hill Street is a residential neighborhood, and it's going to be destroyed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to come up and speak?
Sure.
And you just say your name and address of residence, sir.
Richard Conley. I own the house in 61 Hill Street. And I strongly oppose this project. You know, I, he was talking about the trucks coming in and stuff. The trucks are going to come in, are they going to park their all-night idling, coming in the middle of the night, keeping people awake? The street's not even wide enough for these trucks to come down. If these trucks come down the street, they're going to be coming down the street straddling half the other lane just so they can make it down the streets. I'm just. I'm just...
We asked about hours of operation, and they're gonna get back to us on that.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. And I just, I'm just totally against it, you know? Is all the material gonna be stored inside?
Generally, one of our site plant conditions is no outdoor storage.
What about, like, German bulbs and where they're gonna store them and how they're gonna dispose of them?
That would be, I see dumpings prohibited in the area.
Yeah, they get a leak, so is that gonna run off? They have area protections, or if they do get a leak, some kind of oil or something, so it won't run into the, um, vernal pools and...
I'll leave that one down, and we can ask the applicant behind you, did they have any documentation on spill control and those kind of things as it relates to the site?
Oh, what about, are they gonna do a traffic study?
I don't believe a traffic study is required for this scope of project. If they're looking to add eleven parking spaces, empty space and two potential additional parking, parking, let's say probably get eleven trips at eight-thirty in the morning and eleven trips at five o'clock in the afternoon.
And maybe one semi in the middle of the night.
Again, we're gonna ask about hours of operation.
Because there's, there's eleven parking spots out front, right?
Yes.
And how much room is between the parking spots and the building? Is there enough room there?
Thirty feet.
Is there enough room there to put a semi in there and unload it with steel?
I think, I believe that would be, that would be planned, there's thirty feet between the parking spaces and the building.
Well, I, I don't believe commercial business should be put in, on that side of Hill Street. I, I just think it's gonna ruin the neighborhood, let alone the kids. Um, how, kids are, won't be able to walk down the street anymore. As it is, these trucks come zipping by there. The town could make a ton of money if they just did radar on the street.
I live on John Scott Boulevard, and I say the same thing every day, so.
Even worse.
Yeah.
You wanna make money? Stop picking on people.
I don't think my tickets are anything, but I, I understand your point. It is an industrially-zoned lot.
I understand that, but it's just not a good spot for an industrial building.
Yep.
And then they, you said they moved the building over. Did they have to re-park it to the new spot, all new test pits?
That's, the storm already made peer review through the Conservation Commission, so they go through all of that.
And they brought that up at the conservation, and they waived it, which I thought was, and they did something about an animal, something to check for the animals, backup aid. So, not, not, not a, not a good thing. Thank you.
Sir, if I could just ask you to just, if you have any specific notes in terms of how chemicals would be disposed of at the property, in terms of, just to clarify, the first-class note regarding the Conservation Commission?
Starting with the latter.
Sure.
Excuse me. So, the site is sand and gravel. We did a full extensive testing program, and then we moved the BMPs such that they were just outside of the testing. So, because we have sand and gravels, we don't expect any change. We're not asking for the commission to waive any testing, we're simply asking them to defer it until construction, so that we don't have to mobilize equipment out there again. And because, again, the nature of the soils, there's not going to be any change in groundwater levels. That's what we do the testing for, is to determine seasonal high, seasonal high groundwater. So, again, it's not being waived, it's being conditioned that it has to be done, confirmatory testing prior to construction.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then, in terms of storage, nothing is stored outside of the building. All of the operation, including fabrication, assembly, it all happens inside of the building. All the chemicals and materials that are used are, have to be handled and disposed of in full compliance with all applicable regulations. Nothing is dumped on the site. Again, everything is conducted inside the building. The Conservation Commission asked the very same question. Obviously, they're concerned about the resource areas. They asked the very same question, we gave them the same answer. Would you like me to respond to some of the other issues or wait until?
I think we can, uh, we can wait. Anybody else have to come forward and speak? And I'm gonna say it again, but just to, please state your name and address to the record, please, ma'am.
Captain Northwood, fifty-five Hill Street, right next to the Red House. I've been there almost thirty years. What you're putting there does not belong here. If any of you would come down to Hill Street, have you been to Hill Street where they're trying to put this? You would not want this in your yacht. You would not. I can't even get out my driveway half the time with the cars and trucks that are coming down the street already. There's trucks that come down the street that take up the whole street, and they're not even supposed to be coming down our street, because we were supposed to have a sign years ago saying no trucks, which never got put up. And now you're trying to put this right across the street almost from me? It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. You would not want it in your, in your yacht, across the street from you. Please, take a drive down Hill Street. Take a look at this. You're judging things and you're passing things for people to do whatever they want in our neighborhoods. You're not living there. Listen to the people that live on the street. We've been there for years. This does not belong here.
Anybody else have to come to the podium?
My name is Amy Conley. I'm the other half to sixty-one Hill Street, otherwise known as the Red House. If anyone knows of this, the Red House. I just wanted already to say ditto to what the other residents have already said. We've only lived there a short time, but I am kind of shocked at how many, how much traffic is already coming down that street and speeding. I mean, if you're familiar with Hill Street, it is a very narrow, very wooded street. I'm surprised that some of these heavy trucks do kind of come by, and you really have to go slow in order to avoid some of those sharp corners. But what I have noticed, though, is that there are a lot of bicyclists that use Hill Street to come around to go to the back of the, the walking path. But at the same time, we have also enjoyed lots and lots of wildlife that live on that. And I, I know it's zoned industrial on the other side, but our house was built in seventeen-ninety. I'm quite sure it was residential long before the other side was probably ever industrial. So, I, I get that the other half is industrial, but it doesn't mean that it necessarily should have buildings right across the street from residences. I've seen kids riding on their bikes next door, and I, I just shudder at the fact that one of these trucks that is going way too fast, and even though we put signs up, I know that GPS takes them down Hill Street because it's a shortcut, but the noise factor, the pollution, and I know, I mean, it's surrounded by it, I know they're gonna meet all the regulations with the conservation. It doesn't ma, doesn't mean that you're not destroying some of the environment that is around that area, whether it be noise, environment, or just disrupting the, the peaceful. And I, I pulled out the master plan, because again, we're new to Norton. You know, and some of your goals right on here were to preserve existing open spaces and acquire new open spaces to permanently protect them and improve access for all to open spaces, including the reservoir in the Norton bike path, which is right behind us, as well as protecting the aquifers and water resources from pollution and harmful developments. You, you can't, I, I understand the Conservation Commission has their, their piece, and even that they're meeting all of those requirements, it doesn't mean that they're not destroying a piece of the environment right across the street. And they did waive the, the wildlife habitat plan, but we have seen tons of wildlife in the area, and I would hate to see that destroyed by allowing commercial business to come in. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on the project?
Yes.
My name's Bob Ginnard, I live at fifty-one Hill Street. I've lived there for about twenty-five years. When I first moved in, the end of Hill Street was just a dirt road that's over in front of, from the town line into the industrial park. That used to help keep most of the trucks and everything else down. Then they went and paved it. Well, that changed life completely. Over the years, I've seen traffic increase exponentially. And as other people have said, when you're driving down that road and a truck's coming the other way, you're pretty much pulling off into people's yards sometimes or pulling off. You drive down that street, you look at the edges of the road, you can see where trucks' tires have just eaten away on some of the hills. They're tearing apart the edges of the road. And, I mean, this, this happens all the time. Not only that, but they say they have a thirty-foot area in front here of the, of here. If you bring a semi in there, how is it getting in and out? It's gonna be coming in one way and then trying to circle in to get here, or is it coming in from the industrial park side, which is where most of the trash trucks, who has been, they've been a pretty good neighbor to us. I haven't seen hundreds of trash trucks coming down the street. I'm not always there all day, but I haven't seen that. Most of the wastewater treatment trucks also come in from the other side. How are you gonna get a truck to turn around and come back out this way? Most of the trucks that come in there or come through our, our street are trucks from the industrial park themselves who don't have to listen to what the town in Norton says about coming through, which is a big thing. And on, and also on top of this, in some of this area here, just for conservation reasons, I don't know if anyone's ever walked this area out here, but there are multiple vernal pools out here. There's also a, a natural cranberry block out there that's been there since I've been here. And some years I've gone out and actually picked some cranberries from it. But, you know, this area is a very wet area. If we were in a rainy season right now, I would worry about the, the water tables. How are you gonna put a septic system in, even if it is a sandy gravelly soil, when you are almost at the water table during some parts of times of the year? And you all know this certain flooding, even on Hill Street itself. I think it's right here. You're driving down there after storms, in front of the house, a couple that I don't know the number, but there's the water shut-off is there, and there's a huge puddle that forms there, and it's gonna be right about across the street from this area, and it's constantly there. So, I mean, those are my, my concerns. I also know that even though the planning board has no control about it, since they put that Ryder, Ryder plant in the back, I don't hear a ton of noise from them, but I do get the light pollution. You go out and you have those lights, especially in the winter, shining through. For noise pollution, right now, we have the police shooting range that's right down there. And I'll tell you, it's not good for my dog. She can't, she can't be outside when they're doing that, but that's another story altogether. I'm afraid what this extra noise during the day and everything is gonna bring up. So, those are my concerns. Yep?
If you'd like to just come forward real quick. Two of the things that a couple of the last providers have mentioned is in terms of truck turning radius and in terms of lighting. I know you mentioned that the plan would be for trucks to pull in, stay parallel to the building.
Correct.
And then pull out the opposite way. Is that correct, or would they be?
Trucks can function either way, clockwise, counterclockwise. They can function either way. We've put turning templates on here. The owner, of, of course, isn't gonna build a facility that doesn't accommodate his needs, so. That's something that we do for commercial development on a regular basis. We evaluate turning points.
And you mentioned that the, the light packs are intended to keep light pollution down, correct?
Correct. Full cutoff. If you look at sheet four of the plan set, there's a lighting specification. As I mentioned earlier, there are LED lights there, fourteen-foot mounting lights, so very low to the ground. They're just designed to cast light on the immediate pavement close to the building. And we did that very purposely, because we're well aware that across the street there are residential developments, or dwellings, rather.
And just to confirm as well, I have sheet four in front of me here. I'm not sure if you have, you have three up there.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, I'm sorry, it is three.
Oh, it is three?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm not, so I'm not crazy? And the, okay, so now we have four feet full cutoff, and those are the squares. So, it's just on the building?
Correct, and they're just over the doors.
There's just over the doors, and there's nothing in that front parking area whatsoever?
Correct. Typically, we would have lights, we would like to see lights at the driveways for safety purposes, but we decided not to include those on the plan. So, it's just minimal safety lighting at the building itself.
Thank you. Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair? So, since we've heard a lot about people concerned with the light pollution, with you, and you've said that in the proposed buffer strip tree line in the front, the goal was to leave the native trees that are there in place to create that?
Correct.
So, are those well deciduous trees that are gonna drop everything in the fall and for six months of the year, there's really no protection?
It is mostly deciduous. It is mostly deciduous.
So, for, for half of the year, there'll be, there'll be no real tree buffer other than the trucks in that space?
There will be some, but your point is well taken.
Okay, thanks.
My apologies, I'm not turning around all the way after pricking my neck right now. Anybody else like to speak on the project?
Mr. Chair, if I, just, if I could, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I, we certainly understand the concerns of the residential dwellings, the neighbors. My client wants to be a good neighbor. We worked extensively with him to design a plan that was low-impact. As I mentioned earlier, it's a four-acre site. We're only impacting one quarter of the site. The rest will remain as wooded property forever. So, we have two curb cuts. We'll, we'll screen the building to the best that we can, but the rest of the site will remain undeveloped and undisturbed. So, again, my client wants to be a good neighbor. He understands that the lighting needs to be at a minimum. He understands that the planning board may impose hours of operation. Maybe a truck can't be there idling at night. Maybe it needs to be, you know, a defined time of the day. As I mentioned earlier, I will report back on his intended hours of operation, and we can perhaps discuss that in length at the next meeting.
Thank you. So, that was the one item of quote-unquote homework that I, that I had marked down here, and you've covered the other items here. I know you're also working with conservation. Is there, are there any other questions from members of the board that we would like to ask the applicant to clarify or confirm prior to them coming before us again?
Maybe just, how often do they get deliveries?
And obviously, if you're going back and forth with conservation and peer review and things like that, speaking in terms of timing, to make sure that, we're working off whatever the most updated plan is, if there's tweaks to drainage basins or anything like that from all of those peer review and store calcs and different things. What would be our, our next meetings would be the twentieth, correct? And then after that would be the twenty-seventh. So, twentieth is going to have Pine Street. Does the twenty-seventh look any lighter or not really?
It don't have, it's, it's, yeah.
What, would it light anyway? Okay. Do you have any objection to the twentieth or the twenty-seventh, understanding that the twentieth will have a larger project also on the agenda?
We would prefer the twentieth, if possible.
We would prefer the 20th if possible. I know that you do have a larger agenda, but we're, we're going before the commission again on the 12th. And my client is under pretty significant pressure to obtain permits from the seller. He's under a certain timeframe, so the, to the extent that we can keep this moving, we greatly appreciate it.
Okay. As long as that works for all the different processes you have in place?
If for whatever reason we're not ready for peer review, we'll certainly reach out and request a continuance.
Any other questions for the applicant here prior to taking any additional action?
I just want, one question.
Sure. If you could just come up to the podium again, please, sir?
In regards...
Wait till you, just to make sure you can, the camera can see you and hear you.
Yeah. In regards to the egress and entrance, would it be possible to talk with Ryder to get an extension around Commerce Way? Would it be possible to talk with Ryder to work out a project to extend Commerce Way? To, you know, alleviate this friction of Hill Street? Hill Street, like I say, always had a 200-foot buffer. I don't know what happened to it. But when the state took over the property, there was a plan, showed 200 feet all along Hill Street. And since that plan, we've got solar panels. The apartment people are very upset about that because they bought condos in those apartments and solar panels have degraded the value of those condos. So now you want to add this project to Hill Street? It's just unthinkable that residential and industrial can live that close together. This should be a 200-foot buffer and eliminate all the problems and a different entrance in egress. And if we extend Commerce Way with the deal from Ryder, the answers are there.
I, I appreciate your thoughts and, and your creativity. As the engineer mentioned, the applicant, the owner looked at a number of locations. It is an as-of-right use on its property.
Yeah.
So they've made their choice.
Yes, they have, correct.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to address just the, the extension of that roadway?
If you'd like to speak to it, you certainly can.
So I, I wish I had a plan, but we did look at that, we didn't look at that scenario, but I looked at the plans just to know what was happening around the site. If you look at the configuration of the roadway, it's a cul-de-sac with a development at the end. So what would have to happen is you'd have to extend the road or access through a private development, which just is not possible. So if it were at all possible, we'd be happy to explore that. The other aspect of that is to incur the cost of extending a roadway for a very small program is just cost prohibitive. It just can't be, those types of premiums can't be absorbed by a small project like this. I just wanted to address that. Thank you.
They've given the applicants some homework. And they've asked if they could come back on the 20th. Is there anything further that we'd like to ask at this time?
Motion to continue SPR 15808 to September 20th.
Okay. Thank you for the motion and the second. Any further discussion, the motion may continue. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to continue, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extensions? Okay. Let's see you again on the 20th.
Thank you for your time.
If everybody would like to stick around, next presentation is about the senior center. So... This is SP 15966 and SPR 15640. So again, if you'd like to hear about senior centers, stick around. So were you looking to present off the stick or off of the?
I can, I can do it off the stick if that is making a call.
All right, we have it in front of us.
Do you want to share this with Ryan or you want to just?
Because we got the flash going. I like this right on top. I saw three. Tim? Tim? Yes, Peter. They're, they're here for Dean Street. Pine Street?
Dean Street, old Dean Street, 38th and St. San.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, that's why I come. And that's why we're here. I live on right across.
I talked to Michael on the phone.
Brian.
Okay, well, so you said if you'd like to...
Yeah, we're just confused as to the entrance way and...
Okay. Well, I do not, I will do what I can to...
We appreciate all, we'll go on the agenda next time, but we'd like, at least like to know what's going on. Yeah, I was told they'd say something like that.
Well, it doesn't show it here.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right, we're good.
All right, excellent.
No problem.
Ready to go?
Ready to go?
As long as I set that for a second.
We're good?
All right, great. Thank you, everybody. My name is Scott Lindgren. I work for VHB, a civil engineering firm. And I'm here representing the town on the, the senior center, which is an exciting project for the town, exciting project for me to work on. I have here with me today Michael Poveros from DBW Architects, also part of the project team. He'll, he's here to, to talk a little bit about the, the building itself. We were going to have a few other individuals on the project team here. Matt Keely, who's from VHB, my, my firm, who provided the traffic study. And Kristen, Christina Stevens from IBI Group, the landscape architect. They were going to join via Zoom and do a little bit. We apologize for them.
You had nothing to apologize for. That would be our...
I'm going to put on a little bit of my landscape hat and obviously use my experience in civil engineering and traffic to talk them out. It's all part today, so... Up in front of me right now, we'll talk a little bit more as we get into the slides, but that's, you know, a rendering of the senior center on Mansfield Avenue. So let's talk a little bit about the property. Property is located at 116120 Mansfield Avenue. It's a seven-acre piece of property that, but as you can see, just orientation is north is to the lower right, along the southern end of Mansfield Avenue. It is budding a residential, a few neighborhood homes on the left-hand side or the eastern side of the property and a commercially zoned, commercial property on, on the west side. And Northern Reservoir is to the south. And I'm sure my pointer will work, but it is to the top of the page here.
It is always in both directions.
It is in both directions. It is across the street too, down Mansfield Avenue. But budding and, and located, the property does extend into the reservoir. There is currently, there now, it was an existing residential home, which is in the center of the site. It did have an out-built garage and an outbuilding. And it has two or actually three curb cuts along Mansfield Ave that access the current residence with a loop driveway and a small outbuilding driveway to the left. The Northern Reservoir currently to the top of the page has a bank wetland. It's located on the plan right in front of you in green, lining around the top of the page. There is also an interesting and unique feature of the property is that it does have an isolated wetland associated that is above the bank wetland, dedicated wetland to the reservoir. And that's isolated, and it is not a veronal pool designated as such. It's just an isolated wetland. Located around the bank wetland of Northern Reservoir is a 24, 25-foot buffer from, from the town's Conservation Commission in orange. And the 100-foot buffer zone to the wetland is located further to the bottom of the, into the site, and it's magenta, as you can see there now. Just to let you know, as you might be aware, that this project was in front of the Conservation Commission last week. It has forebought their notice of intent and also the stormwater bylaw approval. It has been undergoing or has undergone peer review already for the stormwater management design and their Conservation Commission elements. We're working through a few comments right now with the Conservation Commission, and that meeting has been continued to next month to answer some of those questions. But also just knowing that we were going to be in front of the board here today, we wanted to combine all the comments and make sure that we have a comprehensive plan for, for both boards, so... Thank you. Here's a, just an aerial existing conditions, just to give you a sense visual of where the building, existing building is, the, the current tree line, the commercial zone property to the right, and a few of the residences to the left of the property here. Proposed conditions, as you saw in the first slide on the title page, this is just a, a rendering of the senior center. It is actually located pretty much right on top of the house. Obviously, the house is gone, hopefully. But the, the senior center is centrally located. It is just under 11,900 square feet in total footprint, square footage. It, there is, you can see two entrance ways located off of Mansfield Avenue. They're in generally the proximity of the existing curb cuts, though there's some slight modifications to provide some spatial, you know, away from the commercially zoned and, and a little bit in between the existing driveway to the garage and, and to the residence. Both of those are a two-way entrance in egress to the property. And they supply, you know, access to the parking areas and to the loading area. So the senior center is, has noted here, and I've outlined them in sort of red, red squares here just to give you an idea of where they are. But there's 59 parking spaces around the site. The largest body of the parking area of 42 is located to the left of the senior center. It is going to be a one-directional driveway as you're coming in from the senior center site or from Mansfield Avenue. That was done for a number of different purposes. It was done to allow a smoother flow around the facility, but also to provide some one-way access to a convenience that the senior center is going to provide. And that has to do with their food bank and the, the idea of providing what they do now of a drive-up delivery when somebody needs some assistance in food, that they'll be able to drive in off of Mansfield Ave around the one-way and actually on the, be on the driver's side. In this, there will be a access to provide a, a food from the food pantry, which is on the left side of the senior center, right to the car that is mighty out in front of the door and window for the food pantry. The other areas are in the front, which is 13 parking spaces. There's handicap-accessible parking spaces located in front of the building. Six handicap spaces in that area. There's also a few normal, standard parking spaces in there. And then there's four parking spaces to the right of the senior center, envisioned more as employee-oriented parking spaces as they're adjacent to the, the loading area. Circulation around the front of the senior center, which is the most where the activity is, is happening for drop-offs and pickups for the senior population. But also if there's any ban or activities that might be utilizing some transport, that there is a center island and a circulation where there is a drop-off from the senior center where they would go counterclockwise and be able to drop off passengers and allow them to go back into the site and park in front of the 13 or, or go back to the 42 parking lot, parking space and find parking there. Or to come back on to Mansfield Avenue if they were just dropping off or picking up. Loading is associated with the senior center, and that's all focused on, for, out onto the right-hand side of the senior center where we do have a loading area to allow for drop-off and pickup of goods, but also picking up trash and refuse. And there is a red square up there. I just wanted to identify that just because it was, I knew it was going to be a little bit hard to see, but that is the dumpster location for the senior center. There is the opportunity, and I think that there will be some deliveries to the, the food pantry. And the site has accommodated in need for a delivery truck for food. that might be dropped off on the left side, though it is not the main loading and unloading area. That is to the right for senior center type of activity. Interesting note on the parking is that we are providing some electric vehicle system parking spaces. Those are located in the front of the facility and one-off to the left. So we're looking to perhaps providing some electric vehicle charging stations for the future as we're seeing those more and more. Just to give a little sense, I just wanted to show you this, you know, because it's not so rendered, but just to give you a little bit more a high-definition look of the aerial and also to relate it to the Norton Reservoir and to the conservation jurisdictional area. So I'll focus you to the 100-foot buffer zone that is magenta. There is not a lot of activity other than grading and stormwater management within that area. There is a small area of parking lot just to the top end of the 42 space parking lot that would be within the buffer zone. But like I said, we've been in front of the conservation commission, and we're currently under review. The total acreage of the property is, there's not a lot of clearing that's going to be happening here. There's about 2.8, 3 acres of cleared areas with some, a few mature trees peppered around the lawn area. The project limits are about 2.8 acres. We are going to impact a little bit of the trees to the right, upper right of the rear of the senior center in the construction of our stormwater system. And there'll be some trees removed in front of the house, you know, around the lawn in the rear. But the majority of the tree line along Norton Reservoir will stay intact, and we are not looking to disturb that. Just a quick overview of the zoning of where we're at. This is own village commercial. The senior center is a by-right activity in a commercial zone. But we are asking for a special permit. And the reason why we're asking for a special permit is for actually the drive-through. In some of the coordination that the project team has done with the town and the building officials, it was noted to us that the drive-through is not a, drive-through specific is not a use that's within a by-right village commercial use, but it is deemed approved by special permit. So though the main underlying use of the senior center is the by-right use, the actual physical nature of just having a drive-through opportunity for senior residents to pick up food, it's been told to us that we should apply for a special permit. So we have done so.
So they've just been going rogue sort of the last two years? Don't ask, don't tell?
Ask, don't tell. I'm not sure. But that is, that is why you see here that we're asking for a special permit for our by-right underlying use. It's for, it's for the drive-through. It's a color to ancillary use to the facility. We also are asking for parking variance. And want to talk a little bit about parking. That's why I put parking summary chart up here. As I indicated in the proposed conditions, we have proposed 59, provided 59 spaces. And then discussions with the officials here, talking about the parking requirements. The zoning regulations are a little bit not direct about senior centers as a use of how many parking spaces they need. The direction was to, when we're looking at a requirement for the parking requirements for that use was to look at public assembly. Well, public assembly has a requirement of one space per two people. And when you start looking at the public assembly space of how many people could actually fit in a public, in this building of 328 people in some office space, you can see that we're looking at 169 spaces if you were to apply what was given to us as sort of the applicable nature of the zoning code. 170 spaces is quite a lot of spaces for 11,000 square foot senior center. When we are looking at, and we'll get to a little bit on the traffic side of things, you know, the amount of trips per day and the activity in there is much less than the parking spaces that were provided. And in consultation with the town and the senior design building committee, you know, we did talk through of how many spaces should be considered. And so that's one of the reasons why we ended up with 59 and why we're asking for variances based on the zoning code. So we do have applications in for that as well.
Is the public assembly parking requirement generally used for houses of worship? Where people are packed close together in seats without other staff?
Yes, and also for, you know, meetings such as this. Per se of saying how many occupancies can come into a room. Obviously, we don't even come close to 300 people today. But at a town meeting, if you were looking at a town meeting event space or a heavy council chamber, I think you would need to look at applying this. And, you know, we'll actually probably be back talking about those type of things when we're back here for the town hall. So we can table that conversation for how shared space works in night meetings and in public space. Just a little teaser for maybe in a month.
File the way.
File the way. So, you know, I'm going to quickly, we've even listened to a lot of meetings today, but I wanted to just jump through and talk a little bit about some of the utilities. This, of course, is stormwater management. We're in front of the conservation commission for this permit, but we're providing, you know, a, comply to Massachusetts stormwater management guidelines and providing infiltration system in the rain garden systems. And you can see those noted around the site. We've got infiltration system basin to the upper north and rain gardens in front and to the right, right rear side. And then we have a swale, which is sort of to the left, which is a pretreatment device which drains to the infiltration basin. And we're complying with not only the, all the seven, nine standards of stormwater management regulations, but complying and with, complying with the town Norton Stormwater Bylaw, where we're providing, you know, greater than 80% treatment and also phosphorus removal requirements. And we're also recharging more than three times the amount of water that is required on an annual basis for with the system. We've done a lot of testing out here for soils and sands and gravels. A lot of opportunity to recharge stormwater into the aquifer and not have it mainly discharge of the land to the water resources of Norton Reservoir and the wetland. So it's a good way of filtering and cleaning and providing a good system of stormwater management. There is no current public sewer in Mansfield Ave in this location, so we are proposing to have a septic system, leach field, and it's located to the rear in the lawn area, to the rear of the senior center. Some information on the system right there now. We've filed these plans with the Board of Health. We have not had a hearing or a meeting yet on that, but assuming that we are now, we are designing this in compliance with Title V of the state code and have been coordinating with the Board of Health Agent on the design itself. So we have obviously a standard. This is a pressure dosing system to provide a quality treatment of our septic effluent from the senior center. There's some septic tank and a grease chamber to control our wastewater to the system. Water services, they're provided direct off of Mansfield Ave. We're going to have a two-inch domestic water service and a six-inch fire protection service for sprinkling the senior center. There are existing hydrant along Mansfield Ave that we're relocating just to adjacent of the new driveway. And we're proposing to put a new hydrant close to the building to meet the requirements of the fire code and in coordination with the fire department of having it within 100 feet of our fire department connection to the building. So there is going to be an internal site hydrant. Quickly, just electric, telephone, and gas services are all still, they're also coming from Mansfield Ave to the service area, which has the existing, the proposed transformer for the electrical service, generator, and also gas meter. It's all to the rear right of the property in the way from the center. Traffic, as I indicated, we did a full traffic study for the senior center. We, you know, had certain intersections that we did over those sort of study area. And we looked at the analysis periods of weekday traffic counts for 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM for the peak traffic conditions. And these counts were done in May 2022. We also looked at the crash history of Mansfield Ave and the area intersections. And they have crash rates below the district average. I should have mentioned to start that Mansfield Ave in this location is actually a state highway. So part of the reason why we have a full traffic study here is that we are going to be applying for curb cut permits from the Mass DOT. We'll be doing that after our processes with the town here for the local approvals. We utilized the ITD trip generation manual to review if there was information on senior centers. But unfortunately, they do not have any back data on senior centers. So we took, you know, a look at our past history and DHB's wealth of knowledge about other senior centers and took a look at and utilized that trip generation to come up and look at our AM and PM peak hours of, you know, 42 new trips. You can see there in terms of the AM of 29 trips and 13 exiting and 17 and 25 in the PM peak hour. After looking at this, traffic operations, you know, all the movements operated at a level of service of D or better under the existing conditions and also in the 2029 built conditions. And the project is not expected to have any significant impact to the roadway system. And then note that, you know, all of this data in the traffic study is going to be reviewed by Mass DOT. We need to seek their approval for the curb cuts and to close the existing ones that are there now. Architectural front elevation. It's a nice picture. I don't know, Michael is here for questions, but this is an imagery of, from Mansfield Avenue. That is the front entrance, which has a cover to it where the, I was describing the front entrance drop-off. We do have a large, you know, a nice rain garden and some tree plantings. And we'll get to show you a little bit about the landscape, but that is the front elevation. And this is out to the rear, the rear of the property as you're extending out to the rear where the septic system was at the lawn area I was speaking to. There's a nice patio area and, you know, entrance to that area with some, a nice, a nice large area for the senior community. Landscape improvements. So Christina isn't here to talk specifics, but I'll say that we have been working with her specifically for the plant regimes within the stormwater management. She's been working, IBI Group, and she's been working very hard to strategically put green plantings at the property lines. You can see to the, both to the residential area and to along to the commercial area, but also to provide some native tree selections. You can see the, you know, just some general, the tree placements that she is providing there. You know, trying to, she put down here the no securing sightlines. And I think that was really important as she was trying to look at the exterior patios for the seniors and the arrivals for the senior populations to the facility. So there's some nice sightlines to the building and to the amenities. She's talking a little bit about winter interest. Ask her when she's back here next time what winter interests, but it's really about the fact that during the winter, obviously deciduous trees drop their leaves. You know, what kind of plantings do you have? What kind of interests outside the group? So it's not just manual plantings. You know, something that's of interest to watch and to see the seasons change for the seniors. And then also too, that there's some planters that she, IBI Group is, you know, planting around the plaza areas for pedestrian safety and also provide some nice planting areas. That is the end of the quick, well, lengthy, depending on your opinion, presentation. But we definitely care for questions and can talk a little bit more about any of the things that I've kind of put it all in front of you and anything else.
I have a couple of leadoff. Could you go back to the aerial view with the traffic flow?
Sure.
Any of them, they all have it marked. So the driveway on the left.
Yes.
And then the drive-through area.
Yes.
Was the, I'm sure I'm not the first person to think of this, so please tell me why this is not the best way to do it. But why do we not have the drive-through, quote-unquote, "drive-through loop" going in the opposite direction? So that when drivers enter on the right side of that driveway, they continue on the right side of the area and around and back out rather than crisscrossing right at the driveway? When somebody's looking to leave from the drive-through and somebody else is coming in because they're going to have to?
Yes, there is some, you know, it's not noted on here in terms of the signage and the stop control and the safety measures, but that's a good question. And it was discussed, you know, in length about drive-throughs. And drive-throughs and what the activity is about, the nature of this. And it was, normal drive-throughs are on the driver's side of the car. And that's where mainly the deposits were going. So if you went counterclockwise, it would be on the opposite side.
Right, and a lot of, a lot of the seniors who go for the food pantry pickups go by, go on their own.
Correct.
That's why they need to be able to get access through the driver's window.
And in the opposite end of things, you can notice the front entry as being one-way counterclockwise. And the reason for that is, is it mainly is for a drop-off and also for handicap and accessibility for vans and such are usually always on, most likely and normally are all on the passenger side. So the drive-through, the drop-off in the front of the entry is counterclockwise for that purpose.
Okay. The distance from the roadway towards, to where that most... The distance from the roadway towards, to where that most, that first kind of, again, opposed on the same ground, that left-hand curve kind of receives back into the parking area, how many cars could queue up? If they were, how many cars could queue up before they went into the street? Where that crossover point would be?
Where the crossover point would be, that's, that's probably about, it's 110 feet from the building. So that's probably around 85 feet. So.
Six cars?
Probably a little bit more. Depends on, you know, depends on where you're going, but, you know.
It's not two cars and then we're in trouble on Mansfield Avenue? That's?
Oh, no. Yeah, no, no, there's not two cars. And, and there isn't, you know, there should be generally.
Just imagining somebody trying to take a left out of the driveway.
Someone taking a left out of the driveway.
Out of trouble and then you'll be in a few cars backed up and then nobody else to get in and then it turns into.
Well, you know, a lot of what we, you know, envision happening here is, you know, is, is, is a lot of, if they're coming in on the left driveway and is to, they may be dropping off and taking the circle back around and then coming back in. But I do, I do see what you're saying is like how many stacks you have before there's a conflict with a left-hand turn. There's, that is probably, I can see where you're talking. That's, that is more, that's not septic, it's probably about, probably about five cars before, one, two, but, you know, almost five, four and a half, but before there's a, there's a chance. But, you know, again, in terms of the how many cars per peak hour and how many people leaving, there is a secondary egress to, obviously to the right side. You know, there, there is that opportunity to exit or.
If they're coming out and they see it's a mess, they're going to take a, take a left and go through the other.
They can go, they can go through the other way if they, so if they see if it's having issues, you can come in on the right-hand side and then get back around. I think in general, the site circulation works for the volume, you know, that you're going to, that you're going to have here. But I do see where your concern is. I can do some measurements for that if you have some more questions on, on that.
I assumed it had been evaluated and driver's door is not something I had thought of, which is why I'm here and you're there. But yeah, I looked at it and went, well, I can solve both of these issues if I just did that. But that makes more sense. The other question I had would be on the complete opposite end of the site, has it abuts the other commercial property?
Yes.
Where those four parking spaces are? Is there any intent to connect the parking to the adjacent lot? And how does that look topographically between the two lots? Is there a drop-off? Is there?
There, it's, it's at grade, so there isn't, there isn't a drop-off there gradewise. So there's no wall, fence, or anything like that. And it's not envisioned to connect. So no. Currently now, there is an existing fence that is there. And the, the thought is that we're looking at that screen fence approach as part of the project here. So there'll be a barrier, a handicap at those parking spaces. So no, I don't think, the only.
There's a little retaining wall somewhere along that line.
Along the edge, along the edge there.
Some of the front parking spaces.
Okay, on the, on the front side there.
Where those parking spaces are closest to Mansfield Ave.
Yeah, I didn't, didn't know, just thinking the grading on the four spaces, I did not think that there was that great difference, but, you know, I know there is a barrier there, it's not intended to connect. And we do not want it to connect, first of all. I think the only connection to the facility that we were trying to promote is actually a pedestrian connection around the, that part of the driveway, just in case the seniors wanted to go grab a slice of pizza.
Yeah, that was kind of, that was my intent, make sure there is a barrier.
Yes.
And that there is not a great problem or that it's connected and there's no great problem either way.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll review that again on terms of the great problem, a great, if there is a question of an issue during our construction documents, but I, I think there is not right there, but, and there will not be a connection.
Sorry, Bill's next to me, so I called him.
So has this been reviewed by the fire GFA? And the reason I ask that is for a building this size, I can't see a way where they're not going to want to have a means of access to the rear of the building in the event that, God forbid, there is a fire there. And that they, they, so the reason, the reason why I think it's a big deal is, I'm really happy you're going with the ZVA and not us for the parking, number of parking spaces, but if the fire department needs a mean of, means of egress, then all of those parking spaces along the back edge potentially are being eliminated for the trucks to be able to circle around. And so you might even have less parking spaces for the ZVA to consider at that point.
Parking isn't for us.
But I.
Right, but the amount.
The number of spaces are going to the ZVA according to what Brian sent out.
The variance.
The variance.
The variance from the 169 to the 59 or whatever it is. But I, but if the fire department wants, and a lot of times it's like crush stone or work or things they do for the fire trucks to get back there, but that could wipe out literally one, two, three, four, five, six, seven spaces back there.
They could get through between, but it'd be tight.
It would be pretty tight. So if, if you haven't gone before them, it's definitely something that probably.
We have, we have been sitting in front of them. They have, have talked about that issue with us and we're about having a, you know, some, some serviceable area in the back. And we talked to them about providing it, sort of not noted there that they could get to the patio with a vehicle. We're in discussions right now what that treatment is going to be.
A lot of times it's almost like a triple-wide sidewalk that they could drive over if they needed to.
Yes, exactly. So, so right now in the plans, there might have been, there's obviously documentation of something a little bit larger. We're talking about this with all groups, with the building committee and the fire department of what that actually needs. Like you said, I would love it to be more of a lower scale, but a serviceable and that, that provides a nice space for the senior residences, but also provides what he has. So I know we're going to have another discussion on that. And I'm sure, I'm sure they'll, they'll put some input to the board that they're okay with what's here in terms of that access.
Okay. Have you thought of for that? I'm sure you have those, like the subservice traction mats that you plant grass in.
Yeah, we did, we kind of throw, we put, kind of put that into the plan, into the package and, but that's, that's what we're talking about. So we're, you know, what, what does that is and what's the length of it? I know that the community here, we're all, we're, as a team, we're looking at the cost and what that is and what the requirements are for the fire code. So it's a large conversation, but yes, that, that's something that I think would be, we would, we would look at and, and/or some other type of treatment under the soil. So basically that they could get a truck or ambulance up there without sinking into the mud. That is really what, what's necessary.
Yeah, we'll satisfy the requirements of the fire department.
Yeah.
I could make it simple.
Yeah, we, yeah, we'll definitely satisfy it and I think we're just, we're just having that discussion of what type.
And at a senior center, you know, there's going to be people with walkers too. So something that's not necessarily all grass gives them more of an ability to walk around the back of the building. And, and there's clearly sidewalks and everything else back there for them.
Yep. And we want to make sure that, you know, if it, if it's a combination of the two, like Michael had indicated, that we'll, you know, we'll accommodate what the fire department wants and just try to merge it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was involved in senior care for 35-plus years and oversaw the expansion of an assisted living. And so that's why I'm sort of focused and aware on what they're going to want on a building this size.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to discuss the traffic study in relation to the food pantry. I guess my first question is, so I noted that you'd use South Hadley as a model for the potential traffic study. I'm wondering how many parking spaces does South Hadley Senior Center have first?
Good question. And I may have to table that question because Matt Healy's not here. And I apologize for that. I'd rather give you correct information than to, to try to expound about the traffic study. If that's okay.
No, perfectly fine. And in that same vein, I would like to know, does South Hadley run their food pantry out of their senior center? And has the cupboards of kindness been consulted in this configuration? And the reason I ask is cupboards of kindness has pickups twice a month at your peak hours. And I am guessing the number of people receiving assistance from the cupboards of kindness is going to far exceed 42. So I'm wondering if your traffic assessment might be slightly off. Also a little bit concerned if cupboards of kindness intends on keeping that schedule, which right now it's twice a month from 4:30 to 6:30 PM. If we have people coming in and stacking up, waiting for their delivery, they are blocking all of the 42 parking spaces.
Vody?
Okay.
We will get back to you on that.
Thank you.
I don't know if they have a, a number of how many people usually come through to pick up someone. Is that something that, information that was shared to you or could be shared to you?
We did, we did, I know there was discussions about that. Unfortunately, I don't have that. Unless Michael Rivera's here could expound upon it.
I don't want to speak.
I don't make anybody speak on that. And if they have a usual, a standard volume of cars that they expect at a certain amount of time, that seems like very good data for a traffic engineer to.
I mean, the present facility is serving the need, is that right? Present senior center?
No.
Well, it's actually.
It is not, it's at town hall.
But see, if I, the uses, the drive-through is related to more people picking up meals during the day.
Well, we also met with the food pantry group as, as part of this design. And they were involved. If you said the woman's name, I wouldn't recognize it, but she attended a number of different meetings.
It's constantly, they intend to stagger the pickup so that it's not taxing the area, but I think it should be included in the traffic assessment, especially since it's only twice a week or twice a month that folks are coming to receive that assistance.
The proposed uses are currently split at different locations.
I'm sorry?
The proposed uses are split at different locations per season. So it's not the existing facility servicing that.
The drive-up window is for, is for more daily meals and not be not related to, drive-up windows is not so much for giving large amounts of food that someone would pick up. It's more for grabbing meals, prepared meals that people are coming to pick up, more related to the senior center than to the pantry. It's a program run by the senior center. The pantry is a separate function, if you will. But in order to make it convenient for them to hand out meals during the day that are pre-made and not have to have people go in and out of their vehicle, they're going to, they're going to basically set up a few hours a day at that end of the building so that they can hand out meals to people who are asking for them, which is a different function than people getting a box of food, if you will. And we created a porch on the back of the building to sort of help sort of make all that flow, there's double doors and other things to try to make that function flow so that as people do drive up, they're going to be able to, to get items. And also they'll be coming in at some point right to buy to get their items.
Right. I'm slightly concerned from what I have heard from the permanent building committee, they are tabling the kitchen facilities at this.
There's no table in the kitchen facilities.
Okay.
We, we're, we're, there's some, there's components of the kitchen. That they would like. And we're trying to find a way to ensure that they can have, it has to do more with capacity, if you will, and size, you know? But there will be a functioning kitchen for this facility.
Okay, so the drive-through window will not be doing cupboards of kindness food assistance for people involved in that program? That's your understanding?
You know, I've never heard of the cupboards of kindness, so I'm a little, I'm sorry I'm always describing it to you in terms of. Yeah, so, so yeah, the, the, the drive-up window is for the function of handing out pre-made meals, not, not for handing out, you know.
Because.
When we first started this facility, that, that we, that wasn't part of the programming. And it came later. So when we first started this, there was only double doors and a porch on the end so that things could be kind of stacked up, if you will, and then handed off to folks as they came up. So the drive-up window again is not, is not really intended to serve food pantry function.
Do you know how that is intended? Because from what I understand, cupboards of kindness is.
But right now, cupboards of kindness, right, no one's, no one's, I know during the pandemic, people would kind of, I understand it got quite busy, that people were, you know, coming for food and they were kind of, you know, being, no one was getting out, people, you know, open their trunk, you put in food, I understand. Right?
It is a widely used, there are people who are homebound and volunteers to deliver.
This is very important to this facility, there's no doubt about it, we want to get it right.
So there are people that do come and collect bags of groceries.
That's right, they're going to park and they're going to collect bags of groceries, right? Yeah.
So the way it was explained is the cupboards of kindness was going to be in that small little section off to the left, the notch that's.
There's, there's going to be like, almost like you'd have a Dunkin' Donuts, there's going to be a window at the side, but not so much for the cupboards of kindness, but for this function that's occurring as part of the food, as part of the senior center.
So I think.
Did that make sense?
It, it does, but they do need to perform both functions. And I'm wondering how that's.
Well, I think that obviously these gentlemen are working on both aspects of the project. So I think that the simplest thing is to confirm where cupboard of kindness operation will be carried out of. And regardless of which building that is, whether it's the one promise or whether it's the other one, to make sure that those peak traffic flows are being counted for and whatever we do. That's.
Yeah, and I, I think we can, we can confirm all of that and bring the data back.
Food pantry is here. Food pantry is on this. Just to be, so you do understand the food pantry will be relocated to this site?
Yeah.
Yes, that's the intent, yes.
So if there are going to be occasions of 90 trips in a two-hour period, then you should know, the traffic engineer should know that.
Yes, it's 90 trips.
We'll figure out whatever.
If it's, if it's the, the, the amount of trips there, we can analyze it and see what the effects are in terms of the traffic on Mansfield Ave. And we will definitely look at the exit egress conditions.
If I could just ask one quick thing. Being of a different age group than a lot of the people sitting here, I know that during the pandemic, the existing senior center was making phone calls to people 65-plus saying that they had donations of soup and if you needed soup, you could come by to pick them up. And I don't know if that's going to continue and if that's part of this drive-through service in addition to the cup, cupboards of kindness. Because I do know people who have gone to the senior center over the last two years and they drive around to the back and somebody comes out and hands them six Panera soup containers to take home to be able to have, have soup for meals. So I wonder if that's part of this drop-off and pickup, drive-through service that is going to continue or not once we get there.
I believe what you described is to grab and go, which is, is to continue.
I think he's actually got something in between, to be honest with you.
It's, it's, it's almost, it's almost a combination of the two different things going on that's been happening.
The only thing is, I'd say the window would be used that way, but I, but you know.
You can check.
We can check.
Yes. Because that would weigh more cars too.
Do they have any additional questions at this time? Do they have any additional questions at this time? Okay. And in terms of, um, timing and procedure, again, you're here first for a special permit for the drive-through and site plan review. Will you give you a couple of pieces, case someone work up is not too bad?
Nope, not too bad.
In terms of how your, all the other applications with different members of every different boards are taking a proceeding, um, do you, when do you feel would be an appropriate time to button up the rest of this?
Well, we know that we're, um, going to be in, hopefully, uh, we haven't gotten a date yet from Tom Clark about zoning board, but that's happening in September. Love to continue to have the conversation at the next available meeting to just, to get there because of the zoning board and, um, and also the conservation commission is wondering about comments as well. So if we can do it sooner, uh, that would be great. I'm sure we can get the information pretty quickly in terms of the traffic study and information from, from the, uh, building committee and, uh, the design team to answer some of the ones that are specific to traffic.
I'm sure if you wanted to know, does only the board date, but that's the 14th.
The 14th.
So obviously, is it a couple of times this evening or our next meeting is the 20th or the 27th? Do we have any additional questions at this time? Obviously, if we have questions, um, should ask them now rather than asking questions in five different rounds.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, one final one, and I know you can't answer it because the landscaping person isn't here. Can we make sure, I, I noted there was a, in the landscape design, there were arborvitae and hosta noted. Can we just make sure they're deer resistant?
All right. It's definitely too intense.
We are, we are flush with deer here.
Flushed with deer too.
Yeah. That would be great. Thank you.
Took all my, uh, my hybrid, uh, flowers off my earth.
Yeah. The bunnies are almost as bad.
Yeah. Uh, but no, I, I will, I will talk with IDI and Christina, who's not here, and make sure that we make that note to, that they're deer resistant.
Thank you. You know, if they have to switch to a spruce or a juniper, great.
We'll, we'll, we'll make those, we'll make those changes.
Thank you.
So Mr. Chair, continue to 20th or 27th? Since they're both after the-
They're both after the ZBA.
Both after the ZBA and the 20th is looking quite full already?
Yes. Yeah. I mean, I will-
Mr. Chair, I think Mr. Viveras would like to talk about a little bit more.
If we could do it sooner would be most helpful. We are trying to get this package out to bid. Only costs are just crazy. People probably have noticed and we're doing our best to, to, to keep getting out the bid. So if we can beat sooner, that would be excellent. And I do want to, I, I know someone from the permanent building committee wasn't planning to attend tonight remotely, um, so if they would want here to maybe answer some questions.
Yeah. The 20th is our next meeting. That is a forward end of, um, so if you choose the 20th over the 27th, uh, it'll be a later meeting for everybody. So if you have a preference, let us know, otherwise-
We'll just be early.
Sure, okay. Uh, I'm, you know, we're-
We, we don't want to be too inconvenient to you. I don't want to make you guys run. I saw my town's party board, so I have a field.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I, I didn't know if, uh, any of the, uh, neighborhood, were you going to ask if there is any comments? I don't want to, uh, obviously be here.
Yeah. No, um, thank you. If we had a comment on, as we discussed for the senior center?
Yes, we would. Oh, not on the senior center. I, I don't have any questions at senior center.
Peter, Peter?
Oh. I just know it's on the grid. Wow.
Okay.
Peter, sorry.
Yes. Okay. So, uh, the applicant has expressed interest in the 20th, the interest of quickening the process and potentially saving the town money.
So I'm watching continue SP 15966, S P R 1564, Hotel September 20th.
Sir? Thank you for the motion and the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Continue to the 20th. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extentions? There's none. Please see you again on the 20th.
Yep, thank you very much.
Okay. Before we close this meeting, we did have a couple of members of the public here that wanted to talk about a section of property on Dean Street.
Zero Dean Street.
So sir, if you could just come to the podium and say your name and address for the record.
I know it's late, so, and we're not on the agenda, so we appreciate it. And, uh, we'll get to this very quickly. This is somewhat asking the place. My name's Robert Keating, 182 Dean Street. If you came to my house, it's actually old Dean Street. So Dean Street is like a backwards S. And, uh, it was when it was all fine lands and everything and Dean Street went right through it. So on Old Dean Street, you have three ways to get in on Dean Street. The middle of the S, the road aside, and Dean Street side. Uh, on August 24th, oh, by the way, these are all residents here, we got two in the back. And under the short notice, uh, we just found out August 23rd. I think it's a good turnout. Uh, we're all concerned at the real estate sign we saw, Berkshire Hathaway, uh, rated 186 Dean Street next to another, um, uh, house. And it's development of 30 acres now, as the chairman was saying to me on the side. Anyone can sell acres. But if you look at these, the Berkshire Hathaway, um, uh, site, it says, hey developers, here's where our land you can develop on. So Dean Street, with people talking about Hill Street, Dean Street is going to be the most narrow street in the, the town. We're not letting a school, a school was come down here. It's a different turn. The also of, if, we're trying to be clear, we're trying to get, is the entranceway really in the 186 Dean Street area? Because that would mean a street coming off one of the most narrow streets in North, close to an intersection. And, um-
Is, now, um, I wish I could share this up on the screen here. I'll ask you to come over here if you don't mind.
Yes.
So we have an applicant-
Right.
On Dean Street with, with, through the application in April. And is this this section of land that we're talking about here? This big plot?
Um, let's see, um-
So we're looking at by 109 Dean, 107 Dean, that area?
No, that's down. That's not in.
No, it's before. No.
Okay. That's, that is the-
It's 186. Yeah, I have from the real estate site. This is, this is what we have from the real estate site.
Going down the other end, okay.
So from the real estate site, we have-
Yeah.
Where Dean Street and Old Dean come together and it has a right of way, and it's not very far until the High Tension Wyres are there. We're very confused.
Is it between the High Tension Wyres and Hodges? Is that what we're talking about?
That's, a lot of land is there, yeah.
Right.
It's in between them.
That's what we're talking about.
It's, but the High Tension Wyres coming down-
It kind of bisects there.
Yeah. Yeah. We're very confused, um, and a person has the right to sell the land. We're wondering advice here, what should we do? In other words, we don't want someone to buy the land and then say, hey, um, there's a lot of people don't, don't agree with this and you, we don't, we're going to protest how a road could come off an Old Dean Road. So what, what advice should, can we get on a general, what advice should we, can you give us as to procedures?
So let's just do this one more time here. I'm going to ask you to point me in the right, 186 Dean.
Yes, 186 Dean Street. That's according to, to the real estate site.
Yeah.
186 Old Dean Street, apparently.
Yes.
Yes, it's Old Dean.
Like I said-
It's a little horseshoe-
Yeah.
Shaped street of Dean. Yeah.
So-
It's called Zero Dean Street, but it seems to be Old Dean Street.
Okay. So that's 18. Uh, 186 Old Dean Street.
Yes.
It's a residential property?
Yes.
So, um, all I, I would say is if you want to see what could potentially go on that property?
Yes.
You would look at the zoning, the zoning bylaws, and there's a R-
RE.
RE column. That's what would be allowed by your, by right or by a special permit on that site.
I'm also concerned about the frontage. Isn't seeing enough frontage to have it? What is there, can you tell? Do you know what the frontage?
I always approach, minimum frontage is right on that zoning table.
Okay.
I always approach that is that for the number of fraud.
Right.
If they don't need, they don't need the frontage, they don't need the frontage.
Yeah. Thank you, because-
What is the requirement?
Well, yeah, it pertains to the exact zone, right? So we-
Yeah.
Should be on that.
Yeah. It depends on the zone and I make sure not to quote bylaws that are from-
Okay.
But that's, um, oh, there we go. And so R80, um, the minnow contiguous frontage is 150.
And what's R60, just in case it's-
150 is all.
Okay.
And you need to have, for R8, you need to have a mini 50-foot front yard against the building, R64. So, um-
If they were going to speed a road, in order to get to all of that land that's back there.
That would be a whole, that's another permitting that you would be noticed for.
Yeah, we got, we, we got no notice.
Yeah. Anybody can, anybody can sell anything.
I agree.
They have to apply for something that, uh-
I agree. So, so are advice to keep on top of this?
I mean, you could talk to the engine, that's-
Good.
That's, um, they may say, yeah, they've had it for 20 years, they just don't want it anymore.
Right.
Or they may be, look, they may have something in mind. That's not, they may tell you, they may not.
Does anyone want to speak? But like I said, um, under the short notice, we have six people here. I think we can get my last one. All right. So we appreciate it, Brian. I appreciate you taking my phone call and saying, could we at least come down and, and try to find out some information there? So, all right. I know it's late, we appreciate it. I'll probably be back.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Hopefully not, never, nothing happens.
Well, I'm, I'm burning, what you said about the frontage.
I just read the, I just read the bylaws there.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.